Okay, it is six oh two and we have a quorum. So I will open this meeting of the North Mill Text Regional School Committee on December fourteenth at six oh three P M. We will start with a roll call. I'll start with the people I see here anyhow. Dave?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
And I do not see Tom. Oh, wait, Tom's here now. Okay, Tom's joining right now. And I don't see Susan. And Craig is not able to attend tonight. Um, so I'm Jane McNeil, the vice chair. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Um, all right, we're going to start with the consent agenda. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, Dave?
Uh, yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Um, I'm not missing anyone, right? Okay. That passes. Six seven, okay, we're good. All right. Um, first thing is public communications. I did see one person signed up. Rebecca Burnham, so Rebecca, I'm allowing you to talk. Um, go ahead, you have three minutes or so.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I decided to speak tonight because of the comments on social media, the comments made by school committee and higher officials within the district over the past year um about the quality of Ashby Elementary School and the perceived education of those students. Um, the district in as as a whole has been uneasy from budget to busing, cutting positions and redistricting. And comments from all of those parties have been hurtful, uneducated and unharmonious. Um, I've sat on several committee meetings this past year to educate myself for what's going on in the district. And um conversation topics were very much the same, um and that was to close Ashby. Um, it was if it was not specifically stated, actions taken by this committee um proved to imply that that's what they want to do. The message over the past year is Ashby's unsafe, Ashby's asbestos ridden, Ashby's not good for students and essentially brainwashing this entire district. Um, you know, as a parent and an active volunteer, I'm the president of the parent teacher committee. I can confidently say that I believe Ashby students are safe, Ashby students are happy, Ashby students are receiving a great education thanks to the wonderful staff. Um, you know, we have a wonderful group of parents who support the community, the students, the staff and each other by, you know, providing enrichment programs for these students and community functions. I'm proud of our town and I'm proud of our school. I'm sorry for those who feel the need to paint Ashby in A E S in a bad light. Um, you know, if it wasn't safe, the students wouldn't be going there. We wouldn't, we have allowed people to who represent this district to corrupt those who did not send their students to A E S with fear tactics and scary words. I want people to reflect and ask themselves, have you been in the school? Have you attended our events? Have you asked a student or a staff member what their days like? Or are you just accepting someone else's point of view? Who last year or this past year even, we fought really hard to keep Ashby open with little to no support from surrounding towns. Um, if we were to close A E S, students from Ashby would have to attend both Swannook and Spalding. Elementary school students from Townsend would have been split up between Swannook and Spalding as well. Townsend would have been impacted um by having their students attend two different schools. And I would never ask a parent to be forced to send their child to another town if I'm not willing to do that myself. Um, the same applies for Townsend families. They should not be forced to send their student elsewhere. This impacted everyone early like late, late spring and hardly anybody else in the district spoke up. There was a survey sent out the day before last, um which was only sent to a select and specific group of families. And the main topic was redistricting West Townsend to Ashby. Um, in my opinion, this was sent out to pit town against town um to make us less cohesive, to get a reaction. And we got one. Surveys like this should go to every parent in the district regardless of where they live. Um, because it impacts more than one town. We're a regional school district, we are N M and we need to start acting like it. By everyone, I mean students, parents, staff, committee members and upper administration. My question to the school committee, um, did you know that what the questions were on the survey? What type of reaction were you expecting? Did you get the reaction you wanted? And why was this not sent to the whole district? And my comments to the community members um across the entire district is to be respectful, join meetings, educate yourself, get involved, volunteer, ask questions to the appropriate people who can give you accurate answers, not social media. And overall, just do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for speaking Rebecca. Um, as you probably know, um, public comment is not a back and forth discussion. Um, but I do want to let you know that um Randy will be speaking about the survey during the portion of policy committee um later in the meeting. So there will be some information on that.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And I do want to reiterate that going to meetings and just speaking to the people directly involved is always the best way to handle things. Um, because there is a lot of misinformation out there sometimes. Um, I didn't see anybody else signed up for public comment, so we will move ahead. Um, again, Craig is not here, so I don't have anything for the chairperson's report. So we'll move right ahead to the superintendent's report. So go ahead Superintendent Morgan.
Sure, thank you. So uh both of my um items tonight uh have to do with the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. First one is more of a notification on um investigating history where we did receive the grant from D E S C. We are moving forward with that curriculum. It is um something that is that is at this point in time grant funded and it is an online program. So moving forward, the there would be apparently very little cost to the district. It is um something other districts across the Commonwealth are doing at this point in time as well. In so far has been um really received with open arms from our staff. I don't know if the assistant superintendent, uh Dr. Bobo Reeves would like to add anything to that, but just more or less notifying uh the committee that we are moving forward with this where it was something that we went in and shared with school committee at that point in time. We applied for a competitive grant um in order to be approved for this program.
And I would just echo uh Superintendent Morgan's comments. Um, our fifth and sixth grade teachers have been going through the training this past year and spent two days um last week down in Boston uh working with educators from throughout Massachusetts that are also participating in investigating history this year. And we got really positive feedback from them coming back from the training in terms of both the curriculum, the materials, as well as um the impact that it's had on students.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the committee have any questions or comments on this?
I did just want to add, we are doing the same in grades nine and ten for the Open Up Math Program as well. And Dr. Cormier is on on this call as well, if anyone has any questions with regard to that.
Not seeing any questions. Dr. Cormier, did you want to add anything?
There is a question I can answer, but I have nothing to add.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, okay. So next business is out of state and overnight field trips. We have several requests here. Um, so I guess we can take them one by one. Um, let's see, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve banned quarrelled travel to Burlington, Vermont on March sixth, twenty twenty four as an overnight stay.
So moved?
Or seconded?
And Randy has a question, I think.
Yep, go ahead Randy.
Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, I was looking at the information that came to us. We normally have a form um that contains all of the information uh that we need to approve these as far as the cost of the trip, um, how it's going to be paid for, um, how many chaperones are going to be, how many students are attending, um, an itinerary if it's known and needed. Um, and I did not see that for any of these um out of out of state field trips. Uh, a couple of them, the ones for the band had explanations, uh, but not this form. Some had some of the information, some did not. Um, there was nothing for some of the other out of field uh trips in our packet. So I'm not sure how we're really supposed to evaluate these.
So they've they've all done the paperwork. Um, I've signed off on all of them. I'm not certain where they got lost. I will find those. Uh, I was understanding they would they were passed on, um, but certainly I could speak to any one of the trips, but I if you want to table it, I can get the paperwork. I know it's been uh signed and delivered, uh, but perhaps not to the folders, it sounds like. So I'm not certain where that happened, but I can own that and figure out what steps need to be taken to fix that. Um, have to answer questions in the meantime if need be.
Okay, it looks like the dates for most of these trips are a few months out, starting in March. Um, so at this point, uh, why don't we table till the next meeting? Um, and I did not announce that earlier, but I guess I should have. Um, our next meeting is January eighteen.
Good, the committee uh send uh me and the advisors a list of what's missing because um typically it's been um formality. So I I'm not certain what's missing from the packets, if you will. So um they've gone through the steps to get approval on I'm on my end. So I said, you know, what's missing for the committee?
It appears as though the the field trip request form uh did not make it into the packet for each of the field trips.
Um, and Tim, to answer your question, uh, policy J J H on school sponsored trips and student travel um at the bottom of page four has the different information that is needed to request an out of state or overnight trip. Um, so I just want to also let everybody know is I'm usually very much in favor of these types of trips. I I think they are wonderful for the students. Um, I on on the face of each one of these, I don't have an issue with it. I just want to make sure that we have all the information that we're supposed to, to be able to uh approve these and make sure that they're safe.
That makes sense to me. Did anybody from the committee have any other comments on that? Okay, we're just going to table till our next meeting then for that. Um, the next.
I was just going to make the motion that we table that topic for the next.
For. Oh, make a motion, sorry, yes.
Yeah, to to move it to the next uh meeting.
Second.
Out of state field trips.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes. Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay, I am a yes as well. That passes eight, nothing. Um, all right, next order of business is program of studies. So Mr. McMahon, would you like to field this?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Smith is here, as is Mr. DeMar. Uh, program studies has been updated to reflect course offerings for the academic year twenty uh four twenty five. Uh, minimal changes to expectations, a couple of courses have been added, uh, some vernacular changes, uh, semantics across the way. I'll let Ms. Smith tackle any major changes, but for the most part, it's pretty standard we had in the past. But go ahead, Ms. Smith, if you'd like.
You're muted, Ms. Smith.
Lori, you're muted.
Yeah, it's not showing muted, but we can't hear you.
In the meantime, I could speak to the fact that what uh Ms. Smith has shared with the committee is reflective of all the changes that have been made. Um, and again, no significant changes reflected uh in the program studies, of course, offerings, but have a feel any questions that might be uh regarding that though.
Ms. Smith, is your, do you want to carry your microphone again or is it not working? No, we can't hear you, I'm sorry. Um, we'll we'll move to Randy has her hand up, so I'll let her speak next.
Yeah, um, I appreciate uh, you know, all the work that you did to change this. Um, I do notice however, um, that that there were ten courses electives uh that were um deleted and thirteen that were added. That seems like quite a lot. I'm just wondering um what the overall um strategy is uh with some of the additions and deletions.
Uh, most is predicated upon student interest. Uh, department heads meet with the administrative team to review current offerings, enrollment numbers, uh, and then explore options. Um, you know, I mean, a generic example I can give you is um Mr. Caleb Chu in our uh new quarrel teacher. Uh, looked at the course offerings at his department, uh, added a couple, uh, re- rebranded one. And we're going to see where the numbers lie in the spring and say, well, what we're going to carry. So um the methodology is really based upon student interest. Um, you know, we've offered some in the past that might run every two or three years. Uh, we try to get them back in the mix. Uh, and next year we've had a couple additions and really uh the the minus plus isn't too concerning because it doesn't involve any staffing issues. It's more a matter of seeing what the kids are interested in and then go from there. But um any changes that are made are typically derived from the department heads with feedback from administrative team.
And I'm just wondering with thirteen new courses, that's obviously thirteen new um curriculums that need to be written. Um, I'm assuming that that doesn't uh impact uh, you know, what, how how much work the teachers are doing and and what they need to do to be to get quality uh curriculum for the next uh next year?
No, I mean, uh, if you if you look at even like the modern world elective offering, uh, it's more change in in title than it is a curriculum. Uh, if you look at some of the, again, core offerings or art offerings, um, I mean, there are specials in their field. So the curriculum changes what they desire, so um it's intrinsically motivated, did they get they developed that for that purpose to attract students? So no, I think she I think the quality is typically uh almost kind of uh refreshing because there's a desire to recruit students to those course offerings. So um typically they they're a big hit initially and then we see the curriculum goes from there. But no, I don't have any concerns about that and that's usually something that folks work on um on their own devotion, own time to get it done. So not a concern, not right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem, Randy, thanks.
Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have um any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for the work on this. Um, just taking a look at some of the courses that you guys have in there. Seems like a lot of relevant stuff that is, you know, really going to kind of generate some interest among the kids. So I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work on that.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Did anybody else have any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five North Mill Sex High School Program of Studies as presented.
So moved?
Or seconded?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Dave, Randy?
Yes.
Thanks, Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
I am a yes, so that passes eight zero. All right, uh, old business, we don't think we had anything under that. Um, so we're going to move on to the subcommittee reports at this point. Um, Lisa, anything for accelerated repair?
Not at this time.
Okay, and um I'm the chair of the Ashby Elementary Building Committee. Um, we are working on a few things, but don't have any major updates at this time. Um, like I said at the last meeting, the asbestos wing has been boarded off and sealed completely. Um, and let's see, Craig is not here for communications. Did anybody else from the communications committee want to speak? Okay, Brad, I'm sorry, I see your hand up now.
I'm sorry, it's my background, you can't see my hand.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened. All right.
Um, I just wanted to bring up, we we when we went past the unified basketball assistance that has to be approved.
Oh, gosh.
Sorry, I just didn't want to get too far along.
Yep, nope, um, why don't I jump back and we'll go back and forth? Sorry about that, guys. That's my eyes these days. I tried to make the agenda big, but I'm looking at a couple screens. All right, um, is Mr. Dawson here?
He, I I do not see him here. Um, I can certainly um speak, speak to a little bit just based on uh on the need. Um, based on the unified basketball program, the number of students that we have involved in it in order to again really maintain a quality and and safe environment for our students. We are looking for um additional support staff to do that. And that would require uh the addition of two um additional stipends. So the these are stipends that already exist in the contract, but we actually need more support than we currently have just based on the numbers that we have. That is all I have for details, just wanted to just wanted to put that out there for now. And if more details are required, um, I can certainly get that from um Mr. Dawson. I did, I thought he was going to be here this evening.
I I do see an M D in attendees. Mr. Dawson, if that's you, please raise your hand and I can um allow you to talk. Um, at this point, I um entertain a motion to approve two six hundred and eighty nine dollar stipends for two unified basketball assistance.
So moved?
Thank you, Lisa, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All right, does anybody have any comments or questions? So so to clarify Superintendent Morgan, this is based on the amount of students participating.
The the amount and um again, the ability to provide a a a safe environment for students.
Okay. Randy?
Um, I noticed that um in the information given in our packet, uh, it had talked about um the the track team, uh, the unified track team having uh two assistants. What's the ratio of of students that are in track versus in basketball? Um, and I do understand that some of these students are uh need a little bit extra um to do these uh programs. But I'm just wondering whether two are needed or is one, uh, because it's not about the numbers is uh what the email was saying.
Um, I I can only share what I've already shared. I think it's in order to provide a a safe environment based on the population of students. And the program has grown. Um, that's again, that's all I can share at this point without um the athletic director on the call.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan? Susan? Oh, you're muted if you're speaking. Okay, well, Mark, Susan has abstained and I am a yes. So that passes. Um, seven, nothing with one extension. And we will jump back over to subcommittee reports now. Um, next is finance.
Please mark Susan as a yes.
Oh, okay, thank you, Susan. Randy is kindly taking minutes for us tonight. Thank you, Randy, so she's updating that. All right, um, moving back to finance, Lisa, anything?
We had a meeting last week and discussed budgetary issues and we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, negotiation, do you want to field that one too or just you?
I think it's about the same as finance. We're moving forward with it. We have an executive session this afternoon or this evening and we'll fill the rest of the committee in on the details.
Okay, thank you. All right, Randy, you've got the big list tonight. Um, policy committee, go ahead, Randy.
All right, uh, first I'd like to uh just address the survey that went out and the reaction that we have. Um, I'd like to thank um Rebecca Burnham uh earlier for her comments. Um, I I think a lot of what you said is uh very accurate. And I'd like to um just reiterate that if people can learn about um the subjects instead of just reacting to their first uh feeling of hearing a little bit of information. Um, the only thing that I would add is uh that please reexamine assigning motive. Um, Rebecca, again, I I agree with so much of what you said, except that the school committee put the survey out to get a reaction. Uh, that's assigning a motive without understanding why or asking questions about why. Um, that is a very dangerous thing to do. Um, and usually uh creates a very inflammatory uh response by everybody on both sides. Um, the survey that was put out was an exploratory uh survey asking about redistricting in the in the district. Um, this policy subcommittee uh had directed Brad, uh Brad Morgan, the superintendent, to put that survey out. Um, so I just want to make sure that uh that is clear that this came from the policy subcommittee. Um, the idea that we put out about redistricting some of West Townsend into Ashby is an old idea to solve a problem that we've had going on for many, many years. Uh, this idea had been floated by past administration. Um, Joan Landers, the previous superintendent, had talked about wanting to try and get that done uh all the years that she was here. Um, the reason why we put this out and we're trying to get some information is because we're trying to solve a problem. We don't try and uh create a lot of change and controversy in the district uh for no reason. The problem that we have is that at Spalding Memorial School in Townsend, um, that school right now is at capacity as far as classrooms are concerned. There are no classrooms to expand if we need to create a new classroom to split up one. Um, at Ashby Elementary, we happen to have extra classrooms that they can expand into. And furthermore, at Ashby Elementary, um, being that they are small, um, they are chronically in a position where they have one class per grade, which can get up high in numbers before we split them, much higher than the rest of the district. And when they get to a point where they have two classes, a lot of the times they have very low enrollment of fifteen and fifteen, sixteen or seventeen, which again is much lower than the rest of the district. Um, I understand that the low classrooms are great, but the high classrooms uh with twenty nine and thirty kids is not. Um, so looking at trying to create a little bit more equity and um stability within the classroom sizes between all the schools, um, that is the problem that we are trying to solve. Um, this is not a simple problem. It's not going to have a simple solution. There's a lot of complex um things underneath the surface um that we need to take a look at and try. Um, and obviously we want to try and do this without adding cost to the district. Um, so a very complex problem. Um, I'd like to just put out there that problem solving, um, I have a great definition that I found that problem solving is the act of defining a problem, which I just did, determining the cause of the problem, and that is Ashby has so many students and uh Townsend has that amount of students and it's a fixed amount uh from each town. We cannot add or subtract at this point in time what it is, it is. Um, identifying, prioritizing and selecting alternatives for a solution are part of problem solving. And that's an S at the at alternatives, multiple alternatives trying to solve this. This is just one that we are bringing up in trying to see whether it is feasible and get some feedback on. And then obviously ultimately uh implementing a solution. My hope is that we can have a productive, calm exchange of thoughts and concerns as we try to tackle this complex issue. Um, we teach our children to not dismiss ideas out of hand, but to ask questions, think and analyze when something is presented to them. I hope that everybody in the communities can go ahead and. I hope that everybody in the communities can go ahead and do that. I'd like to see some objective questioning. Of our ideas and giving feedback from your perspective. That is what we are asking when we put out a survey and we're asking for input. This may not be the best solution from all perspectives. But if we learn from each other, maybe we can make this work. Or come out of this with a better direction to solve this problem. The policy subcommittee, as we started to look down how to solve this. We felt that we need to start getting some information in a very systematic way. Logically, we felt that that Townsend was the first place to ask questions as they are being asked to contemplate the most changes. The largest being sending their children to a school that they don't know anything about and may never have considered. Next, we will go to Ashby parents, and we will ask them to contemplate the change as well. Because they will be welcoming in students into their schools. It'll change in size. And those are different concerns that they will have, not less important concerns, but different concerns. And one survey would not be able to address properly the the answers we are trying to get and the concerns we're trying to get from each. Each town. Lastly, we will end up going to Pepperell as well, although they are not impacted at the moment. By this, you know, thought and this way we're trying to solve a problem. They are part of the district. Their opinion matters. And if we go through something like this, it opens them up to the possibility of a change in the future for them. So I'd like to ask everybody to please be patient while we collect some information. We are gonna be asking more and more questions. We're gonna be trying to come up with ways to. Address concerns that everybody has. And that's all we can say is we are exploring, and in exploring, we don't know what we're gonna get. So if you have not filled out the survey in Townsend and received it, I ask you to please do so. The information we get back from this is very, very important and will affect how we go forward. And we will get other surveys out as we come up with them. So that is what I have to say on the survey. If any of the school committee members have any questions about how we're going about collecting information, again, this is coming from the policy subcommittee. So if you have any questions for the policy subcommittee now, I'd be happy to listen to and answer any questions that you have. And with that, I'd like to continue with the rest of what I need for a policy, which would be, we have several policies up. For a first and second readings. So I will move that we approve a policy E E A A walkers and riders. And this is for adoption. This was brought up in the pa- in a previous meeting. We pulled it. There was one very minor change that was made. To this policy and. And so now it it is up for adoption for a second reading.
Yeah, because you moved, right, Randy?
I moved, yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Randy?
Yes.
Jessica? Lisa? Lisa, I'm sorry, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And also a yes, I believe Susan just dropped from the meeting. Let me just check attendees to see if she's. Back on. I don't see her. All right, then, that passes seven, nothing.
Well, I'm sorry, Susan, did she drop?
Yeah.
So she didn't answer you. So she's being abstained.
Yeah, oh, oh, hold on.
There is a we, there's a Lisa in the attendees. Is that Lisa Bloom? She's raising her hand.
I hope so, because I just made our panelists. Lisa, can you just confirm that's Lisa Bloom?
There we go.
There you are. Okay, Lisa's joining us at six thirty eight. Thank you guys for bringing that to my attention. All right.
All right, next I will move that we approve policy E E A G student transportation in private vehicles for a first reading.
I'll second.
Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Martin?
Yes.
Yes, oh, sorry. Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
And I am a yes, I found, so thank Susan back on. Okay, that passes. Seven, nothing. Go ahead.
Then I will move that we approve policy E F C free and reduced price food services for a first reading.
So moved, or Tom can have the second.
Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa? Lisa Martin, sorry.
Yes.
Trying to go across in order, Tom?
Yes.
Dave? Dave, I think you're muted, so.
Yes, sorry. I'm not used to going so late.
I know, I mixed everything up on people. I'm just kind of going in order of my view this time. Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that passes seven, zero.
Okay, and the last is I I move that we approve a policy L B relations with other schools and school districts for a first reading.
Second.
All right, Randy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Who's the B?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, that passes seven, zero. All right, is that everything, Randy?
Yes, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. As far as select boards update, I don't have an update at this time. Dave, you have an update for Pepperell? Okay, Jessica for Townsend?
Nope.
Okay, I'm just checking real quick before we move to. Executive session. Is there any other business that we need to discuss? All right, does someone want to make the motion to join executive session? And by reading it all, and then I'll I'll take it once it's voted. And just to make a point, when we do move to executive session, we will not be convening an open session. Would anyone like to go ahead and read all of this and make the motion?
Yeah, I got you, Jim. Give me one sec.
Thanks, Tom.
So I move that the committee meet in executive session pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty one A. For the following purposes, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Spalding Memorial School lease. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional Teacher. Regional School District Teachers Association, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty three, and the committee will not reconvene in open session, as you mentioned.
Go ahead, second?
Second.
I was close to picking Dave on that one, maybe? It was a little louder. We'll go with him. That's what always happens to me. I'm too quiet. All right, Randy? Randy's a yes, she's nodding. Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yeah.
All right. At this point, we are approved to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty eight. Section twenty one A for the following purpose. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Spalding Memorial School lease. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District. Teachers Association, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. And approval of the executive session minutes dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty three. The committee will not reconvene in open session. Thank you, everybody, for attending.